Good morning, everyone. My name is Esther Van Heimer. I'm the mayor of the city of Asheville, and I'd like to welcome you to the May 8th, 2025 Agenda Briefing Work Session. All council members and staff are participating virtually. The meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel or through the city's virtual engagement hub, accessible through the front page of the city's website. You may listen to the meeting via phone at 855-925-2801 with meeting code 11308. And as usual, we do not take public comment during the agenda review sessions. Council and staff, when I call your name, please unmute yourself and say a quick hello. Vice Mayor Antoinette Mosley.
Good morning.
Maggie Ullman just said that you can only see half my face. Can you only see half my face? Do I need to scoot over like this? How's that?
I mean, you're like this. It's not bad.
Okay, that's good.
That's strange, because it's the same camera. Okidoki, back where we were.
Now you're, yeah.
Now what's happening?
You're back to three quarters of your face.
And so in my little box, I'm my whole face, my whole self. Okay, I'm going to introduce you all, and then I'm going to get out and get back in and see if my whole face is there. Okay. Back to where, what was I reading?
Introductions.
I know, but now my script is gone. See, I can only see half of my, okay, here we go. Okay, so we did Vice Mayor Antoinette Mosley.
Hello.
Councilmember Sage Turner.
Hello.
Councilmember, is it Councilmember Kim Roney?
Good morning.
Councilmember Maggie Ullman.
Good morning.
Councilmember Beau Hess.
Good morning.
We will be joined later by Councilmember Shanika Smith. So City Manager Deborah Campbell.
Good morning.
Assistant City Manager Ben Woody.
You're me, Ben.
Morning.
Interim Assistant City Manager. Yeah, we are, yeah, we got it. Interim Assistant City Manager Jade Dundas.
Good morning.
City Attorney Brad Branham.
Good morning.
And City Clerk Maggie Burleson.
Good morning.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager Deborah Campbell.
Thanks, Mayor. And again, good morning, everyone. As you know, the council agenda briefing meetings are designed to help you all prepare for your upcoming business meetings. Your next meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, May the 13th, and as usual, the meeting will start at 5:00 PM and will be held in the council chamber located on the second floor of City Hall. And in case you didn't know, a closed session meeting is also scheduled immediately following the business meeting. Today's agenda briefing meeting will begin first with an overview and discussion of items scheduled for action or discussion at your business meeting on May 13th. Assistant City Manager Ben Woody will cover these items. There are a lot of items on the consent agenda, and Ben will briefly highlight several of them, but will move through them as quickly as possible. Next, Ben will review council committee agendas. We will be restarting some council committees this month, which represents another milestone reached in the recovery process. As you know, we haven't held any council committee meetings since the storm. As a result of discussions that you retreat earlier this year and other priorities, your council committees have been restructured, and Ben will review this process and provide information about some of the upcoming committee meetings and agenda items. Ben will also briefly review the eight-week agenda of future items coming to council. And then lastly, we have a number of updates that will be presented under the Other Issues and Updates section of today's agenda. First, we'll have an update presented by Emily Ball, the city's Homeless Strategy Division Manager, on the results of the point-in-time count of the city's unhoused population. Next, Jess Foster, our Sanitation Division Manager, will give an update on debris removal efforts. We've been providing these updates as part of our weekly media briefings, but this is the first time we will have a comprehensive update of these efforts. And to close out the updates, Chris Carnes, the city's traffic engineer, will provide updates on traffic management and design efforts associated with several transportation projects that are currently underway or proposed. I will now turn it over to Assistant City Manager Ben Woody for a review of the May 13 business agenda. Ben?
Thank you, Deborah. And again, just want to confirm that everybody can hear me. I think they can. Good. Good morning, Mayor, and for the council. As Deborah indicated, I'm going to jump into our council agenda for your Tuesday meeting. I want to start, you have a lot of proclamations. At that meeting, we have five proclamations, a lot, a lot to do in that regard. I don't normally do this. I want to flag two of those. The first is May 11th through 17th is National Police Week, so a great opportunity to recognize and appreciate our police department and all the work they do. Another important week for us is May 19th through the 23rd is Public Works Week, and council, you have recognized Public Works Week for many, many years now. And I know that the staff in PW always appreciate that. I think this year has a special significance, given the work that that department and their staff did throughout Hurricane Ali. And so I'm really looking forward to that one proclamation as well. So I will jump into the consent agenda. As always, I'm going to cover a couple of highlights. If I miss anything, or you have questions, please just raise your hand and we can pause. Today, I'm actually going to start with item G on the consent. Item G is a positive development in the city's ongoing effort to get rental assistance into our community. Due to cost efficiencies associated with administering these funds, the city is now able to allocate an additional $135,000 into the Helene Housing Recovery Assistance Grant Program. That's a program that we have partnered with the county. The county's done a great job of administering that. Our staff has also done a great job of managing our costs, and the $135,000 we're adding into that fund is largely anticipated or is coming from administrative costs that were not expended to get this program into place. So what this does is it moves the total city contribution to the grant program to just over $759,000 to date. The original allocation that council made provided three months of rental assistance to 160 Asheville families with an average of $3,150 of assistance per household. And with this additional $135,000 allocation, we anticipate the additional funding will support another 27 families. So a great, great example of the program being effective and our department CED in particular finding ways to get additional funds into that program. Moving on, item K is another positive development for the community. The city applied for and received a $5 million loan from the Community Disaster Loan Program. We've talked about that before, but this is, this is a resolution executing that agreement. What this loan does is it helps local governments that have incurred significant loss of revenue due to a major disaster. These loan funds in particular will help us balance the FLO 26 budget and therefore minimize the overall property tax increase that was needed to balance that budget. And of course, as we discussed, there's a possibility that the loan will be forgiven by Congress at some point in the future. So again, good news on that front. Items in and in related to McCormick Field and the Asheville Tourist Baseball Team. This is the execution of a long-term lease agreement with the tourist ownership group for the use of McCormick Field for Minor League Baseball, as well as this executes the partnership funding model that includes financial contributions, not only from the team itself, but also from the score at Asheville. Tony McDowell, our finance director, is going to cover the city's financial obligations to the project as part of public hearing item A, which he'll discuss a little later in this review. And I'm going to move to item S through B, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Jessica Morris. Jessica is our Assistant Transportation Director, as council is aware of. And Jessica, I think you're going to cover some highlights of those consent items related to transportation. So I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Good morning, council. We have several transportation-related items on the agenda for your meeting next week. The first one is a parking contract to re-up our pressure washing services. The remainder of the items are transit-related, and several of those are ones that we bring forward to you every year. We have an agreement that we bring forward to you for approval from the Town of Black or with the Town of Black Mountain to help provide funding support for the Route 170. We also are coming to you to request to execute the contract with Buncombe County for our paratransit. And we are also bringing forward to you two items that are kind of interrelated. The number T or letter T is to execute a one-year extension with our current transit operations and maintenance contractor, RATP Dev. And then letter U is a approval for, to accept funds being rescinded from Buncombe County from their 5307 funds that they are unable to spend and will lapse this year. And I say that they're related because our recommendation is that that the funding that's being rescinded by the county be used to help cover some of the increased costs of RATP Dev's contract for next year. I also would like to do a little PowerPoint presentation for you to talk about some of the staffing issues at RATP Dev that we've received some questions about. And I can go ahead and start that now. We'll be really quick. So we've been receiving questions from, from council as well as from the community because we've had, you know, this has been an ongoing, an ongoing issue nationally. But we have had, in the more recent weeks, some pretty extreme staffing shortages at Asheville Rides Transit. When I say we, I am referring to our contractor RATP Dev, but we work with them very closely. And we've been working with them on this issue to try to manage as best we can what is a, what is a complex situation with their staffing. And we have had to have trips cut, and there have been impacts to the transit station being open, which I'm sure many of you have heard from, from folks in town. So although RATP Dev continues to focus on recruitment and retention and have added a lot of new ways of trying to do that, this is something that does not seem to be turning around anytime soon. But we are, as city staff, looking at the contract, and we are hoping to address these shortages with, with the company through some of the means that we have in our contract. And we are bringing forward, as I mentioned, this contract extension request because we, we were supposed to be in our final year of the contract. However, with Helene and everything that happened, we wanted to extend the contract for a year to give everybody, including ourselves, ample time to complete two other major efforts, which are the Comprehensive Operations Analysis for the Transit System and the RFP process for the next contract itself. So as I mentioned, this is a continued national trend with CDL drivers, but really all, all types of staffing. We've been dealing with this since COVID, and there have been a couple of instances where we have had to cut trips. Hurricane Helene definitely did not help the staffing situation at ART. And we currently have 48, 49 drivers when really at a bare, bare bones, we should have 60 and a half drivers. But they also have staffing issues in other areas besides just drivers. There's also like utility workers, maintenance techs, et cetera. So, but the, the driver shortage is what causes the trip, trip cuts. So this happened, started happening about six weeks ago. It varies day to day based on how many people are scheduled, if people call out sick, if people need to take a vacation. So it has, has impacted between eight and 60 trips per day. We do hundreds and hundreds of trips per day, so it's definitely, you know, 60 is not a great number, but the majority of service is still running as typical. And how we have decided which trips to cut, it's not always looking at like highest or lowest ridership. We look first at, does this route have, have multiple frequencies per hour? If it does, then we look at those routes first because our goal is to try to keep coverage on all routes, even if the frequency is reduced. And then we also look at, then we look at ridership depending on, on the time of day, as well as what communities or neighborhoods are we impacting when we cut a trip. So we have been trying to rotate the pain, if you will. And these routes represent routes that have typically a 30-minute frequency. So we've cut, we've cut one bus off of each route, and that would bring it to a once-per-hour frequency. But this is not, these are being rotated. It's not all day long on some of these. It might be that we, you know, cut some trips from the morning on one of these routes and the evening on another. It's just, we try to, try to balance it as best we can against all the needs. Recruitment and retention, as I mentioned, ART staff, ART management is trying to do what they can. They have a pretty, pretty good bonus structure for sign-on bonuses as well as referral bonuses for, for current employees. And they've been doing a lot in the way of trying to retain by doing a lot of highlights of exemplary employees and, and celebrations for their staff. So next steps, we are going to be meeting with RATP Dev management, including their Senior Vice President next week, or two weeks from now, I'm sorry. We're going to be looking at the contract, talking to them, having a, a very serious conversation about, about potentially having to maybe renegotiate some of the contract to account for the staffing shortages. There could be additional liquidated damages as well that we're looking at. We do not pay for trips that do not run, and we also impose a liquidated damage on top of that trip being missed. So they are already being hit with liquidated damages. So we're looking at additional options on that, on top of that, to see if, you know, it's not what we want to do, but we, we really want to get to a place where we're incentivizing them as much as possible to try to get their staffing numbers up. We've also started to develop our next RFP, and so we're, we're looking at all these, these issues that we've had over the last eight years or so. How can we make our next contract stronger? How can we make sure that we have really good performance measures and methods to hold contractors to account? And so these are the case takeaways. I, I won't go over these, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Councilwoman Roney?
Thank you. I'm glad that you're here to present today because this has literally impacted every day of my commute. So first, can we get these slides sent to the first, to the full council? Yes. Be able to dig into them a little bit. I am deeply concerned about something that's not matching up with the recruitment and retention of drivers because I'm among those who have been sending folks with CDL licenses to the transit system, and they're not getting hired. And the language that I'm hearing is being used is they're looking for qualified drivers. And so something is fishy, and it's not working clearly. So I don't, what I'm asking folks to do is document it and send it in. I haven't seen any documentation of that. But I'm, hopefully we'll figure out what's going on there. I have sent in questions about the number of W6 and N3 routes that are missed. I hear you today saying that there's a, a number of variables and trying not to just remove transit service entirely from a route, but trying to look at those routes where there is at least once an hour service. But as I mentioned in the email that I sent, when we cut the W6 and, and 3, it's not necessarily maybe the highest ridership routes. But if we look at the census tract data on how many households along that route don't have access to a car, it does seem like cutting the W6 that serves Spicaview Apartments and the N3 that serves Hillcrest is, is a sharp cut to make. So it, it was popping up on my iRide that it's happening often, and that's one of the reasons why I'm hearing so much from neighbors. Another thing that you mentioned was contract accountability. One of the reasons that I thought we switched to a contract type that's like that turnkey service was that if we weren't serving a route, we would not be paying for that missed route. And I'm just curious, it probably will require some follow-up after this meeting because we have a big agenda today. But I would love to know, since we've been seeing these trends, how many routes weren't run and then how many routes weren't paid for? Because that seems to me the, the method of accountability, and I would just love to know if that's happening.
Yeah, yes. We, so if a route, if a trip isn't run, let's say a trip, a route has 20 trips a day. If they cut two trips, we don't pay, we don't pay for trips that aren't run. So, and on top of that, they get a liquidated damage added to it. So not only are we not paying for a trip that's not run, they're also getting penalized financially for that trip. But.
It would help to have some follow-up on like, what's the percentage of trips that we haven't been paying for? Or some sort of link to see what that accountability like process looks like? Because I know it wasn't always happening in the past.
Yeah, no, it has been as long as I've been here. We, we always, we get an invoice every month, and we double-check everything. Any trips that weren't run, they, it comes off the top, and then add, we add liquidated damages. We can provide some, some past invoices if you want to see what that looks like. We'd be happy to provide that.
Another thing that's happening pretty often is the transit center not being open. I know we had advocacy groups that were asking, hey, since so many people had their cars damaged, and we want to connect businesses with employees, should we even be returning the fares? What I'm noticing is that folks can't even pay. And when the transit center isn't open, should we be charging fares as a barrier to entry? The number of times it's been closed is, is pretty often lately. So it would help to know maybe how, some connection for the full council on what happens when the transit center is closed. It's not just the bathroom. It's being able to buy monthly passes, it's being able to buy annual passes, being able to buy tickets. So there are a variety of factors when the transit center isn't open. But another thing that's impacting transit riders every day is that there are schedule changes that are happening intermittently. And I know on May 4th, we had a big schedule change, and I've just kind of been looking for more information out in the world about that, but that would reach the transit riders. And it's not yet as visible as I would expect to see for some route changes. Specifically, I'm thinking of the linkages that were supposed to prevent people from missing their connection. The W5 to S4 that serves the South Side and the Emma Community was one that was unlinked, and so people have been missing their buses.
Okay, thank you. We will look into that, and we can push out some additional information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hess has his hand raised. Jessica?
Yes, Mr. Hess, please.
Hey, Jessica, thank you so much for being here and for all your hard work on this. So just to piggyback off where Councilmember Roney, I do have concerns that the riders aren't getting the information about the changes in time for them to make informed decisions about work and, and family and where they need to go. I haven't seen any communication about that. The second thing is, I think there's a culture thing also going on with this management. I've met with a few of the transit employees, including the union. And I was wondering if we could have a, a couple of their members maybe sit in with you, with them to discuss some of the things that might be solutions to the issues. And then three, I know we have the buses that we're still paying for, the electric buses. And I know there was some follow-up from staff about the 250,000 that we're paying every year for those and wondering if we did figure out a way to sell those off and in a way that we can recoup. And then fourth, if we can, one thing I'm, again, hearing from riders and staff is safety issues with the buses. And I think there's a couple of just, you know, practical, inexpensive things that we can do to make the buses safer that I'd love to circle back around and see if we can get through.
Okay, I'll, I'll address the Proterra question. Just to clarify, it's not, we're not paying $250,000 a year. We do have a lease for the batteries of those buses that was done when the city purchased the buses, and that is approximately $100,000 per year. And we have been working with the legal team here and talking with that leaseholder and seeing, you know, seeing what our options are. I think, I think it's safe to say that we are very highly interested in trying to end that current lease since we can't even run the buses, and we're also looking at options for disposal.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are any further questions, Jessica, thank you for a great job. We thought that this was necessary because we have gotten several questions from council members as well as interest concerns expressed by people in our community about transit service. Sage?
Deborah, thanks. One quick question. When is that study that's underway and being, surveys are out, when is that back? Complete?
Jessica, you want to give just a brief timeline on the?
So right now, we, well, we kicked off on April 11th. We are going through data collection and existing conditions review with them right now. There is going to be a, an in-depth workshop with staff in July. And we are also going to be convening an advisory committee here in the next few weeks to start with that. And then ultimately, we will be wrapping up in April of next year. But we should have some really solid recommendations and information in the months ahead of that.
Okay, so that's in time for budget cycle next year, but how does that align with our contract with RTP Dev?
So we're gonna, it, it's, um, there's going to be some overlap. We're going to have to release the RFP for the next year's contract prior to the COA being completely finished. But we will have, we believe that, we, we believe that at that time, we will have enough information to include in the RFP, and through that process, we'll have enough information for the contractors who will be bidding on it to have very solid bids.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ben?
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, Jessica, for helping out with reviews today. And I think Councilman Roney may have one more question.
I do, but it's not about that, those items. I wanted to hopefully go back briefly to item G about the rental assistance. Have the other funds we allocated for rental assistance been fully distributed to renters? Like, are there any outstanding funds for rental assistance? Or do we know?
I think we should get back with that. I don't want to guess. I think we should get back with that. I don't want to guess on that one, Ben, if that's okay.
That's, that's where I'm at. I don't want to say something incorrect. So let us add that as a follow-up item and we can, as part of that follow-up, Councilman Roni, we can include some of the staff I talked about today. So we can give a, a good overview of what's out, what's remaining. So thank you for that question.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm gonna go to item Z. And given we have a lot of consent items this month, item Z is gonna be the last one I plan to cover today. And this is an important one. This is the first round of HALENE small recovery projects that are now eligible for reimbursement funding through FEMA. So you're gonna begin to see the budget amendment as we proceed into the recovery process. And again, in the, in the attached or linked request form as well as in the staff report, council has access to see the list of small projects that are eligible for this. This particular budget amendment is in the amount of $3.8 billion. Again, this is connected to our FEMA reimbursement. And as I mentioned, as, as we begin to move projects forward, both small and complex, you'll begin to see more of these reimbursement budget amendments. And so that concludes my review of consent. Any questions or any items we want to cover? Great. I'm gonna move into presentations and reports. We have a manager's report scheduled for your meeting. We have Ford employee recognition. So again, always like to, to share the good work that we're seeing from our employees as we move through this recovery effort. You also have a state of the airport presentation. That is the annual required update presentation from the airport to city council. And then I'm actually gonna close, where I'm gonna turn it over to Tony McDowell to kind of close out the remainder of the agenda review. And Tony, you're gonna give a brief update on item C. And then I think you want to give a little bit of an update on public hearing item A. So I will turn it over to Tony.
All right. Thanks, Ben. And I'll be quick. Yeah, the item C under presentations for next week is presentation of the manager's proposed budget. So we've reached another milestone with that process this year. Did just want to briefly kind of go through some of the key takeaways that we'll be sharing with you all next week. As you all know, we've had a number of work sessions, three budget work sessions already, as we've been going through the budget process. Staff has been utilizing the feedback from those work sessions to finalize manager's proposed budget. And as I said, that'll be presented to you all next week. There really are no major changes to the budget since we last spoke to you all at the work session in early April. The major item that we'd want to highlight in the proposed budget is the funding that we have in, in the budget for the 3% hybrid compensation increase for employees. That's for employees who are on what we call our general pay plans here at the city. The budget also includes funding for some compression adjustments in the police department that we discussed with you all that will allow them to move to a new pay plan. That's a career ladder type of pay plan. And then we also have, the other thing we were gonna highlight here is there's funding in the budget next year to put in place the supervisory structure that will eventually allow, allow the actual fire department to add a fourth shift. So again, funding for those items in the budget as well. Ben already mentioned the good news about the community development or community disaster loan that we have received. We received official notification on April 29th that we're qualifying for a $5 million loan through that program. We've included that revenue as a, as a budget, as a revenue, as a budget revenue in next year's budget. And what that allowed us to do is to balance the budget, which includes those compensation options, maintain a 15% fund balance and recommend a property tax rate increase of 3.26 cents. If you all remember back to that last work session in early April, we were forecasting then that that tax rate increase would be somewhere between 3.2, I think it was 3.21 and 3.27. So we kind of landed kind of right there in the middle for that. So again, those are kind of the key highlights from the budget. We'll have a full presentation for you all on Tuesday. We'll have the budget document on the city's website, hopefully by the close of business tomorrow. So before I talk about the public hearing option related to the debt, I'll just pause there if there's any questions about the budget. Can I ask you, two, two hands? I wasn't sure who, whose hand got up first, but I'll start with Councilmember Hess.
Hey, Tony, thank you so much for this. I, I, I am still really interested and I'd be interested to hear from my colleagues. What the $380,000 for July and the 200 and something thousand for the January class of the firefighters would add to that tax increase?
Yes. So I wasn't sure if that was a question or not for, for staff to answer. But yeah, we would, if council wanted to add those firefighters after we do the proposed budget present, presentation next week, we can calculate that. One penny on the tax rate is about $2 million. So it would definitely be, it would be less than a half cent, but we can calculate that and get back to you all.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roni?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was pretty clear from my inbox that we have at least four council members that wanted to see that information. And I would expect we would see it before the city manager's budget is presented. So it still feels like we're flying in the dark a little bit on this one. It's just, it seems like a math problem. And if we do the math, then we'll be told that it's wrong. So just really would love to work in real numbers, not in assumptions. And that is something that we need from staff. But I have a different kind of curiosity. It's bubbling up when I'm having conversations with elected officials across Western North Carolina. There are multiple Senate and House bills in the state's budget process that name revenue replacement for municipalities impacted by HALENE. If the state were to expedite those, we would be in a very different position on whether or not we would have to raise property taxes. Now, I'm not getting the sense that it's gonna pass before the state budget passes. So unfortunately, it's too late for us for this year. But what I am hearing murmurs of is should municipalities consider 30 or 60 day budgets? So that when the state's budget passes and we see hopefully revenue replacement that so that we can fully participate in the benefit to the state. And certainly with the impact on our residents and our businesses, we haven't talked about that at all. And I'm wondering if it would be important for us to have a real serious conversation about it. We've done it once before fairly recently. And so I would love to know what the implications would be. Do folks have an appetite for that? If the state revenue comes through afterwards, it doesn't seem like we can make an adjustment to the property tax increase later.
Yes, we can. So, so let's just back up on the assumption, and we talked about this in one of the other meetings, but I, I, I have tremendous heartburn about doing a 30, 60, 90 day budget. But my understanding, and I'm looking around my screen, Brad can chime in, if we, if we do see something substantial that affects our financial condition like revenue replacement, that allows us to reopen the budget and it would allow us to modify the property tax. So there's not a risk there. We can pass a full year budget and still modify it if revenue replacement comes in. And it'll be a big question if it happens. You know, we're gonna talk about it at the Western North Carolina Recovery Committee meeting on Monday in Boone. But also, even if it were to happen, would it be revenue replacement for this current fiscal year? Or would it also include projected losses next year, which we have some, you know, or, you know, we just don't know if it would really meaningfully change the outlook for the next, this next fiscal year or not.
I'm glad to hear that. I, I don't know if other cities and counties across Western North Carolina are talking about the same conversation and what the strategies are. But when it comes down to making decisions around what Bo just mentioned, I for one would like to see numbers for that so they can fit together in the whole equation.
So what do you, can you say numbers for that? I mean, it's hypothetical. We don't really know what, I mean, we know what our revenue losses are this year. I think Tony can remind us, our estimate for this current fiscal year believes around 15 million. So we know what our number is and we know what our projected revenue losses are for next year because Tony's presented to us several times. Between one and four million, between property tax and sales tax, I believe is what, where he's landed with that projection. So we know what our numbers look like. What we don't know is what the state legislature is considering for revenue, revenue loss, if they are considering. Certainly the governor's requesting it.
Sage?
I'm jumping back to the firefight discussion, so I don't want to close that if there's still more to be said.
If, if I can chime in just really quickly to add some context to what the mayor said, I, I do want to confirm that there is an allowance to adjust after the fact, the tax rate that has already been set as of the end of the fiscal year. If we receive substantially more money that was not anticipated, this would be perhaps in the form of some state governmental grant. There is a limitation on that, but it's January 1st. So you essentially have six months to make that change and that would, and anticipate that would be within the timeframe that the legislature would make final decisions. You can't say.
That would be record setting if they adjourned in January. I think October is their current record.
I do kind of have a question, if you don't mind Sage, before you get to yours, because it's related to what we're talking about. I'm wondering what potential effect, if any, doing the 30, 90, 60 that Kim spoke of could possibly have since we're already on a watch list? Does, does that negatively affect us in that regard?
It, it could for sure. I mean, I think that we're, we're, we're actually, and I know I'm gonna talk about the McCormick Field debt as the next agenda item, but we're gonna be quote unquote selling that debt the day after we adopt the budget. So I think if the message is out there that we are not adopting a budget or that we're doing an interim budget, it certainly could affect those, those debt ratings. Yes, for sure. So and, and I haven't heard, I haven't talked to all my colleagues across Western North Carolina, but I haven't heard of any other local governments and, and, or from Buckland County that they're considering an interim budget at the moment. So I'm sorry, Brad, go back, go back to you.
No, Tony, you're, you're correct. Just to add one thing to that, the allowance statutorily to do an interim budget is really not what you might think. It is not a budget for the next 30 or 60 days. It is essentially a very short-term allowance to just keep the lights on. And so that's my colloquial way to say this. You can't fund any new programs or changes. You're essentially just paying debt service salaries and keeping the absolute status quo. So the anticipated changes that have been discussed, including some of the salary adjustments that council has been considering, you cannot add those as part of an interim budget. You must just essentially keep things status quo until you make the final budget. And there is a limitation on how long until you have to accept a, and adopt a final budget.
So then to that point, because when I joined council, literally my first vote was on a budget and it had been pushed back. Are you saying there were different reasons then that made it permissible and it's not what we're facing now?
So, Tony, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, that was the, the budget vote, I think in 2021, when we were looking at reimagining public safety and we did delay adoption of the budget by one month at that point. So you all adopted the budget in July. We did delay even further, kind of making some final decisions about how to allocate police funding. And you all did that later in the year, I think after the, after the end of the first quarter. But the interim budget itself was adopted in late July and still late June. So it was only a one-month delay.
And, and it is really important to point out that the big limitation temporally speaking on doing an interim budget is the tax rate still must be set by a certain date. I, I don't immediately have the statutory deadline for that, but you only have a certain amount of time before you must set the tax rate. And that essentially creates a limitation on how long an interim budget can go for, because you can only adopt that tax rate at, at, as part of your fiscal year budget.
Yeah. And, and that's really what was the limiting factor last time as well. And that's why we did the budget adoption in late July, because we heard from the county that that was the latest that they could delay before they sent the tech, the tax bills out. So it was late July was the latest we could go.
Ready to transition, Sage?
Yeah.
Okay, just real quick. So I'm not sure. I think I heard both Bo and Kim saying they hadn't seen the numbers. I hadn't thought we did too, but we did get them in our email. So it's $390,000 for a year to add the five positions. And I had my check-in or three by three yesterday, and I think I was in the last group. And I was surprised to hear that we didn't have the four that I thought we had supporting adding some of those positions in this budget cycle we're planning. So I'm just taking a moment to say I would have supported that. And if there are other colleagues that do, this would be a chance to speak up. What I do have a question about for Tony though in relation is, so I heard 205,000 to establish the supervisory role that helps build the model per se, right?
Correct.
And then, so is that something, like in our check-in, I was like, under the impression that everybody was on the same page. The fire chief, the fire union, our staff, everybody. But then that doesn't seem to be the case. So the 205 for the supervisory position, is that a choice we made as staff or was that a suggestion from the fire department that was working on this issue? Like, can someone give me some background on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to start and Deborah, if you want to chime in as well. So that was, that was part of the, the study that the consultant did that the Fire Association hired, recommended that $205,000 in next year's budget, again, to put in place the supervisory structure ahead of beginning to add the firefighters in the next fiscal year. So that was already on the table from the study.
Okay.
And then when we met, staff met with the Fire Association, we, we discussed, you know, as, as part of the compromise that we would include that as next year's budget and again, then began looking at adding firefighters in future years. So Ms. Cam Walton, if there's anything you would add to that?
I don't think there's anything to add, but I, I will say that this was the first year, I believe, where, where there have been a concerted effort between the city manager's office, the fire department and the association to get on the same page. We, and I haven't heard differently, are on the same page with the manager's recommended budget of the 205,000, because here's the deal. We had a study that was done. But implementation of that study, we, we feel like this year will allow us to truly get real numbers in terms of implementation and, and, and be able to roll out this fourth shift strategy in a much more practical and impactful manner. So we are saying this year, study analysis, create the structure, the next budget cycle in '27, begin to add the resources to stand up that process.
I appreciate that. And I really do want to share my appreciation for how much everyone in the varying corners of this conversation regarding AFD did work together on this. I feel a lot of hope about that. And I feel like this new model is kind of what we've been talking about in the background for the last couple of years. You know, if it's an hours issue, then let's talk about it. But I still thought that we're, we had some discussion on the table for adding some positions. So if that's not the case and the majority's not there, that's fine. I just wanted to voice that I would still support that.
Thank you, Bo. And then, Ms. Roni?
Member Turner, yes. The numbers I'm particularly talking about is what, how much of a half cent or how much of a cent would add to the tax burden and that on our people and the homeowners? That's what I want to know. When I'm speaking with folks in Asheville, there is an appetite to take care of our public works, our water and our public safety folks. And so I would also support moving in a more expedited fashion.
I think if we could find a way to add positions in January and reduce the tax burden, but also because we don't know what's gonna happen with the revenue replacement and bringing all of our departments along. When I was looking at the numbers for essentially cost of living adjustments, the fire department is the one that is not going to receive more than the 3%. And so moving in a direction that is recommended by the study that our Firefighters Association supports and helps to show good faith in retaining and recruiting these, these staff members that helped us get through this crisis and will get us through the next crisis. I think we have to do something. And so if we aren't willing to do it at the beginning of the year with the summer class, then I wonder if there's a way to compromise. with the summer class, then I wonder if there's a way to compromise and do the winter class and reduce the tax burden. I would like.
Ask then of Tony to see what those numbers look like for a partial.
We have the number for that.
Twenty five thousand. And so just for, you know.
It's just a matter of where does that come from?
Yeah, and one penny equals two million dollars. So let's say it's a quarter of a penny gets you above both of these numbers.
Yeah, and I just quickly ran the numbers while we were talking. So the the half year, the two hundred and twenty five thousand would be an additional point one one cents on the tax rate. So instead of the three point two six that we have in the manager's proposed budget, it would go up to three point three seven.
This is why. And don't forget the county is also raising their taxes.
Right. And I know we are publishing our draft budget tomorrow. So that's why I brought it up today. Just in case there was some greater discussion, I'd rather do it here before we publish than at the DAS future day, but.
Can someone, just to read the information about the positions doing four to five positions in this next fiscal year start, I mean, Kim had said, starting in January, what I understand from the fire chief is that would be the earliest possible date anyway, because of the way they have to onboard new hires. So was the number that we just heard for the full year or for the half year?
Two hundred and twenty five thousand for the half year.
Yeah. And and just to be clear, that would be, we would hire, so the next time a training class would start, there's one in July and one in January. So what we're talking about here would be starting those five, five trainees in January twenty twenty six, then they would be on shift. They would graduate and be on shift about a year from now.
I would support that. That's why I asked about the two hundred and five thousand too, because I wasn't sure if they could be interchanged, but I appreciate it. So it sounds like on top of that for sure.
So so I so this is a little tricky for me because, you know, when we do our council retreats and we talk about our lane and not our lane and da da da. It's generally the manager's lane to tell us when we need to hire personnel and and Deborah's being very quiet and not saying anything here. So I'm trying to figure out if this is just because we also have been told through several meetings that the manager's office is working with the chief and the consultant and the and the association to come up with a plan that they're bringing to us. And so I don't, I don't. And every time we have one of these discussions, we leave this meeting and we hear a lot from people who were watching and listening, and they give us their version and they tell us what was happening. So I mean, I I worry, I think what we were seeing proposed is the manager's recommendation. If the manager is saying, well, the recommendation is a compromise and I could support hiring four to five new fire employees starting in January, you guys make the political decision whether or not to raise the funds for it. That's on you. Then then, okay, then we all know what our lane is and and we're doing our thing. So is there any? I guess I'm asking management. I mean, what what's going on here?
So the manager's budget proposes not to hire any or add any additional firefighters in the upcoming fiscal year's budget, which would be FY twenty six. It also recommends that you all strongly consider doing this transition in FY twenty seven of adding potentially four to five new firefighters. Again, our rationale is that we are talking about a whole long term transition of the number of hours that firefighters work on a weekly basis from fifty six and forty two. And we feel that there needs to be additional analysis and assessment and study so that we can figure out how this long term transition plan will be implemented. That is that is our best professional judgment in terms of the need and especially in a budget cycle where we have tremendous, we're taking out a loan in order to meet and balance our budget this year. And if this was such a critical need, hopefully you all would trust myself and the chief that we would be recommending this or accelerating this. So I will stop there.
Mayor, you're you're exactly correct. I just to clarify, I am not directing anyone to hire more folks. I just want us to maybe look at providing or passing a budget that allows us to hire for those folks if if we can.
I think it's Sage.
I'm not sure if I was next in the queue, but you know, early on in this budget process, I raised my hand and said, maybe we shouldn't do any major model changes to public safety this year. And that was APD and AFD at the time. And but we're not choosing to do that. We are changing the model and you know, inputting some more funding with APD. And I just, I understand and respect your, you know, one has fully staffed and doesn't suffer the same vacancies, right? So there's a argument to be made there. But in my mind, I'm also having witnessed the fire department takes such an expanded role in the community in the last five plus years. And it's not simply putting out fires anymore. It's like EMT, it's first responder, it's everything. And I I see the model changing. I see a different need for it in the community and I see some growth and we struggle with these hours conversations every year. So I'll leave it there. It's just our agenda briefing, but I would support adding the half month, December, January crew of two hundred and twenty five if it gets there.
And and Sage, with all due respect, we are supporting changing the model. The issue has become, when does the resources that are needed related to implementation, when is that added to the budget? Ms. Alman?
As you were just, as you were sharing about the manager's proposal to wait to add the resources so that there can be a broader evaluation and preparation. I I appreciate that a lot. I mean, the memo that was done was available like April first. That's pretty raw, fresh data for us to make such a large decision in one year. What I would request is as we continue to do analysis on issues of staffing shortage and staffing expansion, I'm reflecting on the data that you all provided us with our turnover rates and our capacity in different departments. I was startled and very concerned to see that we need thirty eight positions in public works. And I would really hope that before we take any structural changes to staff in one direction as we're doing more exploration in the coming year that we could that staff could provide some analysis on what some evolutions and structural changes in public works could also look like, so that as we're looking towards next budgets year, we we have some more information on that. And that it be done in house. I appreciate that the firefighter union contracted for the study that a lot of folks are referencing, but I think that in house analysis for our public works department would be really helpful.
And Maggie, thanks for raising that because we actually are in the process of having an internal assessment of public works similar to what we did for our human resources department and and some others. So thank you for for raising that. Anthony.
So a couple of things. I did have an opportunity to speak with the president of the union. I told him I would definitely like to see what the numbers look like in adding five, and I think we've done that. One of the questions I have is how did we land on five? Like, does it have to be five? Can it be two point five? Right? I don't know. And I would still be interested if whatever number we land on, I would like to see additional cuts in that amount. Because I feel like what the city manager is saying, really, we can't afford to do any of this because we're taking out a loan in the first place. And then there's the need to balance that with the, like a recognition of the great work that the fire department and all departments have done. So, I mean, if we're going down the rabbit hole, let me know what fewer looks like. And if it means we have to cut something that's not popular, like whatever grant programs that we normally do, I would like to see what that looks like.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We we proposed four of five because the study had proposed fourteen. We said we could probably get started after we get more information. That's why this whole year of just more study and analysis is so important, so that we really can come to a better understanding of the actual need. Literally, we were kind of spitballing the four to five going into twenty seven, to be quite honest with you. Again, that's why we didn't recommend anything this year, that we would take the time, excuse me, to have further study and analysis and get really closer to what that four or five would truly mean in terms of transitioning into that fourth shift. And you're right, and and Ms. Alman is right, in particular in terms of of recruitment and retention is very, very low in terms of needs for Nashville Fire Department. We have sixty eight or so vacant positions in APD. So, yeah, we were very strategic in terms of what we needed to place a lot of emphasis on from a from a pay perspective. And that, the pay plan is the restructuring in APD. With AFD, it's actually a shift change workers, how long and how many hours they would work. So I don't know if there's any other comments on this one. We've spent a lot on this agenda item.
I just want to say I am concerned that if we don't act expedited this year, that we can, we're going to kick the can down the road. And, you know, just keep prolonging it, we could be in a workspace next year. And then we could say we're still not doing the five. So that's just my concern. We're doing a very robust pay plan for our other public safety as they deserve. And I'd like to just see this one a little bit more robust.
All right, Les, any other questions or comments? I'll move us to the next agenda item. The last thing I would say about the budget is it's just presentation next Tuesday. So you all will have about four weeks after this to deliberate as well and make final decisions on some of the the things that we discussed today. So the next item up for for next Tuesday is going to be a public hearing on the issuance of debt for the McCormick Field project. Ben mentioned earlier in his his portion of the briefing today that there are a couple of other agenda items on a consent that you all will be considering related to the agreements with the TDA and the team. And so just as a reminder, I will point out that this debt issuance and this this funding of this project is a partnership project with the TDA, Buckingham County and the Asheville tourists, so and the city as well. So they're all contributing toward the debt service on this project. The item on Tuesday is the first step in the issuance of this debt. You all will be adopting hopefully the initial, what called the initial findings recommendation or resolution related to the debt, and then you'll be holding a public hearing. And then we'll come back to you at your May twenty seventh meeting for adoption of the final resolution. And then we will go out and sell the debt in early June. That way we can get the cash in to help reimburse this because I think as you all know, that project's been underway now for about nine or ten months. So we have spent a significant amount of money. So it's important to get that cash in before we close out this fiscal year. The one thing I wanted to point out today just quickly is the initial public notice that went out regarding this item had the not to exceed amount at thirty four million. We've changed that not to exceed amount to thirty five million now. That's just to make sure we give ourselves enough flexibility when we issue the debt in early June to pay the cost of issuance and some other things that may come up as we go go through this. So we wanted to make sure we had that flexibility. We may not have to issue the full thirty five million, but we wanted to make that change. And because the public hearing notice had already gone out, we wanted to mention that today. We'll also mention that again on Tuesday when we present this to you all. So that's all I had on that item. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tony, and great, great job. You're natural at the agenda reviews. So thanks for doing those couple items. And just to conclude that, as Deborah said earlier, you do have a closed session on Tuesday, so we'll have to convene into that at the end of the meeting. So I'll go ahead and move into council committees. And as Deborah also said, this is a pretty big milestone. We're getting our council committee restarted this month. That'll help us remove us in the down the road towards restarting our advisory board and synchronizing all the work planning that needs to happen. So real quickly, you'll see HCD is scheduled for May twentieth at ten AM. That is that committee's traditional meeting time. What you'll see that is new is PEDE. So now we've got environment incorporated into this committee. It too will happen on May twentieth, and that will be at one PM. So for folks that are watching, that is different than our traditional Monday at four PM meeting we've had for PEDE. That'll be on the same day as HCD. And so real quickly, right now at the staff level, as the budget proceeds, we are in the process of reviewing our internal work plans, our department level work plans, and that's a variety of things from what departments will focus on to advance your priorities as well as the steady state work that we have to continue doing. So what we'd like to do for these first council committee meetings is meet with with the committees, do a little bit of an overview, talk about, you know, what the purpose of the committee is. And we do have new scopes or changes to committee scopes because we have new elements of the committee as well as a new set of priorities. We're very recovery focused for FLO twenty six. So we want to review that and then begin to talk about through your committees and through council work, how we prioritize some of those recovery goals and the things we want to accomplish. That's how we really are successful with our work planning and have better integrations. That'll be some of the topic or most of the topic for those first committee meetings. As you can see on the link, we're still determining what, if any, normal agenda items will be on those committee meetings. So there is some steady state items we need to start getting back on the council committee work plan. But we'll have more to come of what those agendas will look like as they form. Of course, we meet with agenda or committee chairs to develop this agenda. So more to come on that. But again, we're very excited to have those committees turning back on. And just a little bit of a timeline, you we are working as staff to begin to develop our FLO twenty six organizational work plan. We're working through a process to do that. That will align with your council priorities. One thing I want to flag is on June tenth, you'll have your first meeting of the Policy Finance and Infrastructure Council Committee. That is all of you. So we have everybody together. We'll have Fountain Works there at that meeting, and that'll be an opportunity to take a look at some of the organizational work plan items that staff is working on. Talk about your priorities and the prioritization that we're using as we enter into FLO twenty six. We've got a lot to do in the next few weeks in terms of council committees. That will then help us determine how depth to turn on and utilize the expertise on our advisory boards. So we haven't settled a date yet, but later in June, we will have the follow up meeting with advisory board chairs and co chair to begin to bring them into the process and make sure that they are aligned with council's priorities. And so what that moves us to is hopefully at the second committee meeting in June for public safety, HCD and PED, that's when you'll have a chance to begin to really finalize and develop those council committee work plans. All that leads us to ideally, we start FY twenty six on July one with some agreement and some strategy around how we're prioritizing our work and what we want to accomplish. Any questions on council committees? Great. I'm going to assume I covered that well. So I'm going to keep moving so we can get to the other issues. The last item I have to cover is the eight week agenda. Look ahead and as you see, we don't have a lot on our agenda in the look ahead, which I think is a good thing. They have a lot to do in our council committee work planning effort. But I do want to flag a few things. As Tony mentioned, we've still got time steps to go in the budget process. The budget public hearing will be scheduled for May twenty seventh, so that is on the horizon. And then right now, the budget adoption is scheduled for June tenth. So again, we're about a month out by actual budget adoption. Two other things I want to flag is on May twenty-seventh, we do have two items coming back that council related to funding requests for affordable housing development. These are steady state items, so just want the community to know that we continue to look and move forward requests to support the production of affordable housing in our community. So I'm going to pause there, and if there are no other questions, I will turn it back over to Deborah to move it into other issues and update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. In my opening comments, I talked about the number of items that we have under this section of the agenda. And we're going to start with Emily Ball. Did I see Emily?
Yes.
All righty, there she is. All righty, who's going to provide us with an update on the city's homeless point in time count? And Emily, I'll just turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. We, I know you all are familiar with the Asheville-Buncombe Continuum of Care. Excuse me. But as a reminder, this is our community's collaborative planning body responsible for homelessness in our community. The Continuum of Care is a collaborative planning body, not a standalone organization. So it designates a lead agency to provide staff support underneath this body of stakeholders. And the city of Asheville is that designated lead agency. So that's the role of our staff team here in the Homeless Strategy Division. So I am here partly in my capacity as the COC lead to share with you the results of the Continuum of Care's annual point in time count. Key takeaways, the annual point in time count provides a snapshot of homelessness, and each COC is responsible for completing that count in January every year. This year, the story is all about Helene. Helene has had a significant impact on homelessness in our community, of course, and in our COC. Thirty-five percent of people who were unsheltered on the night of the point in time count reported that their homelessness was due to Helene. That's extremely high. And the number of people who are in shelter or transitional housing was eighteen percent lower than in the past, eighteen percent lower than last year, due in part to the loss of bed capacity at ABCCM's Veterans Restoration Quarters, which was destroyed by the storm. It's a critically important time for Continuum of Care action to develop an effective system of care. And the COC's first strategic plan will be adopted shortly to guide the work going forward. Brief background on the point in time count is, again, that each COC is required to conduct a count during the last ten days in January, at least every ten years. And the count must include people who are in emergency shelters, transitional housing, and people who are unsheltered. It also includes people who are in a hotel or motel paid for by an agency. So that was a real change. That's always been true. We've always included that. But this year in particular, a change was that because FEMA's Transitional Sheltering Assistance Program was operating on the night of the point in time count, we also included those numbers in our totals. In our community, we choose to count on the last Tuesday in January each year. Results are submitted to HUD, and then those are compiled to inform federal strategy and to report to Congress each year in the annual homeless assessment report about sort of the state of homelessness across the country. In the 2024 report, point in time data showed an eighteen percent increase in homelessness across the country. Participation in the point in time count is voluntary, and the data set is absolutely imperfect. That will always be true, but it can show us trends that can help inform COC decision making. And also, as our HMIS data collection improves, that's our homeless management information systems or a database on client level information. As our data collection improves, the COC will be able to review more accurate and real-time data and be less dependent on point in time count results for information about homelessness. In last year's count, we expanded the planning group using a Continuum of Care approach. And because of that, we were able to identify a hundred and two more people than we otherwise would have done had we used our prior methodology. This year, we replicated that same methodology. So this is our first apples-to-apples count using that expanded approach. The count this year occurred on January twenty-eighth. We had a hundred and thirty-five volunteers. Sixty of those were Continuum of Care members. And again, as I mentioned, federal regulations require that point in time count reports include people who are in hotels and motels funded by an agency. So that means this year, we included people in FEMA's Transitional Sheltering Assistance Program, even though most TSA participants were not experiencing homelessness before their hotel stay and mostly exited TSA into other housing. The design of that program is to serve people who lost housing as a result of the storm. FEMA provides aggregate data for TSA only without demographics. So what we have is just a high-level picture of participation in that program. The HUD guidance that we got was to extrapolate demographics for TSA participants using census data. So we will certainly do that in our report to HUD, but we've not focused on that locally since that's not actually very accurate data for us about who was participating in that program. A bit of historical context about the point in time count. You can see that our, the far-right column there is the total number of people that we've counted over the past several years. Our counts have largely been in the five hundreds with an outlier in 2022. And then last year, with that expanded methodology, we had a much higher count of seven hundred and thirty-nine people. So in 2025, our point in time count results, we counted a total of seven hundred and fifty-five people in the 2025 count. So that's just slightly higher than the seven hundred and thirty-nine people that we identified in last year's count. However, the composition of this count is very different than what we've seen in the past, particularly in terms of where people are located. You can see here that the number of people who are in shelters is exactly the same, somehow magically the same between 2024 and 2025. The number of people in transitional housing is very different because of the loss of the Veterans Restoration Quarters. And then the number of people who are unsheltered was much higher this year compared to the past. Emergency shelter totals, we saw a decrease in the number of people who were staying in facilities, so kind of our regular shelter facilities in the community, but an increase in the number of people who were staying in hotels through programs for folks experiencing homelessness. That was particularly a veteran initiative for people who were displaced by the storm. In transitional housing, the biggest change that we saw again was ABCCM's Veterans Restoration Quarters. You may know that they were able to secure a hotel facility down the street from the VRQ and so have been operating that program in that location, but at a significantly decreased capacity on the night of the count compared to their, compared to when they had their facility. And then our most significant change was in the number of people who were unsheltered. So we counted three hundred and twenty-eight people. That's a hundred and nine more than we counted last year. But notably, a hundred and sixteen of those people reported that they were experiencing homelessness as a result of Tropical Storm Helene. So our total count, again, seven hundred and fifty-five, the blue cell that you see. We've separated out the FEMA TSA data because it is such an outlier in our, you know, it's such a unique circumstance in this data set. On the night of the point in time count, there were one thousand five hundred and forty-eight people enrolled in FEMA's TSA program in Buncombe County. So the total number that we will report to HUD for the 2025 count is two thousand three hundred and three. If you remove that TSA portion, seven fifty-five is, again, our kind of apples-to-apples number compared to last year's point in time count. On the unsheltered count, we asked some supplemental questions to gather additional information. And these are the same questions that we've asked the past several years with an additional question about Helene. So we asked, when you last had housing, was it in Asheville or Buncombe County? Sixty-five percent of people who answered that question said yes. Thirty-five percent said no. If not, where was it that you last had housing? Ninety-eight percent, or I'm sorry, ninety-eight people answered that question. Thirty-one said Western North Carolina. Eighteen said elsewhere in North Carolina, and forty-nine said another state. We also asked, how long have you been in Asheville and Buncombe County? Seventy-one people responded to that with an average of two-point-three years. And then again, we asked, are you experiencing homelessness as a result of Tropical Storm Helene? And one hundred and sixteen people said yes, which was thirty-five percent of the unsheltered count. We also asked, what is one thing you wish our community understood about homelessness? We get great responses to this. This is just a small sample of those. But people, people, I think, appreciate the opportunity to share that information with us. So said things like, have more awareness of the facilities and what they offer. Some shelter volunteers look down on unsheltered people. It's hard to get help, the mental strain. Everyone who sleeps outside of businesses is not trespassing. Just have to have a place where people, we are not a disease. Housing has a long wait. I wish they knew how cold it is right now. You all should know by now, we've been through trauma. Cannot go places, banned from stuff, how hard it is to try to live. We are still people. You can talk to us. Next steps on the point in time count are that our staff team will submit the results to HUD. Typically, those are due in April. This is, you know, things have been shifting with HUD. And so this is a different year. The deadline has not yet been published, but we'll submit those results as soon as that's possible. And then our Continuum of Care Board has a draft strategic plan underway. They'll review that plan at their meeting later today to provide any feedback and make any revisions. And then they'll vote to adopt that plan at their June twelfth meeting. That will be a three-year strategic plan. So it will begin July first and continue through June thirtieth of 2028. It'll be the first strategic plan of our new Continuum of Care. So really, an exciting advancement for us as we continue the work. And then key takeaways, again, this is our annual count. This was a very different year for us because of Helene, particularly related to unsheltered homelessness. And we are in a path with our new strategic plan to guide that work going forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Kim.
It does seem that some neighborhoods are noticing an increase in neighbors that are without shelter. And that's not surprising to me because so many of our neighbors without shelter were in close proximity to the river. And not only did the river swell and the banks change, so many trees were down, but there's also been a lot of debris removal and cleanup. So that population has been displaced into other areas of the city. But in those conversations with neighborhoods, one of the things I'm noticing is that the question has been, when the Homer Bound project opened at Days Inn, it was such a relief to our community because people had a place to be and to sleep. And so folks are asking me, and I have the same question. Where are we at with the Ramada project? Do we have any updates on when that would be open or like where it is in the phasings? I imagine there are lots of delays, and that could be one of them. But it would help to know what kind of timeline we're looking at.
I don't know a specific timeline. What I do know is that a change in the project was that they found, after they got in to do the demo, that all of the wiring had to be replaced. And so that delayed the, delayed the process in that they had to have new architectural drawings to respond to that. This is clearly not my area of expertise. I don't really know how to talk about this. But they have been getting new plans to account for replacing all of the electric. They are, and they're underway. I don't, you know, I don't know the projected occupancy date, but that project is moving forward.
That would be a pretty painful setback, but manageable. My question is more around the COC as we look to them for their guidance. I have been kind of watching our historical reports for these point in time counts and kind of watching the where are people coming from question. And I feel like the percentage of people that came from outside our state is higher. I guess really what I'm getting at is, is there more data available? I know one of the coordinated entry opportunities that we were doing when Ramada was underway as like more of an experiment was trying to find their last successful housing community and see if we could get them in touch with folks there and get them returned to where they have more contacts. Does that still happen? And is there, does the COC aggregate that data? And could we get some of it in the future? Just kind of curious if anybody's watching those trends.
Yes, I would say yes to everything that you just said. And also, all of that takes time that, you know, the COC is a year old now and has really been building out the structure and processes. And I think is really ready to dig in and do the work now. Some of what you described is absolutely reflected in the draft strategic plan that the board will be looking at tonight. Diversion specifically is the strategy that helps reunify people with friends or family. And that is a feature of the strategic plan. There is a system performance committee that's now established that is digging into data and really looking at how to improve our data collection so that we can do the kind of analysis that's needed to answer questions like that and inform strategy. So yes, I think all of that is in motion and all is, everything in the COC is publicly available and can be shared as that develops over time.
Thank you, Emily. And in case you haven't heard it in a while, we're always so lucky to have you. So thank you for working through this with all of these complications and changes. And, you know, it's not lost on me that you actually, the COC and our overall community had success until Helene. So we would have seen maybe some success in reducing the numbers of unhoused in our community had it not been for Helene. So I can't really say congratulations, but congratulations. And yeah, I just appreciate all the hard work and all the volunteers that are on the COC working on this. It's very complicated.
It's very complicated. And I, thank you, I appreciate that. And I also want to name that it is important to, for all of us to really hold that homelessness is such an extraordinary crisis for people experiencing it and for our community. And also that the COC is not crisis response. The COC is long-term, system-building, strategic development. And that can be a hard tension to hold. You know, people who slept outside last night need us to move quickly. And also, we must move collaboratively and strategically if we actually are going to get any traction. So I do, I am happy to share Continuum of Care updates with you all. I am excited about the COC and where we are headed. And also, it is, it is the long-term work in our community.
Thank you, Emily, for all your work on this. I am interested, especially when we get our CDBG, the R funds, in expanding and diversifying our collaborations. This is something I work in every day, train social worker, and I work with the homeless population. And that first thing on that slide where they gave you that direct personal feedback is something I hear about all the time. The shelters here have arbitrary rules and requirements for IDs for people with mental illness, for people with LGBTQIA community, for folks with animals. If they show any signs of mental illness, they're often kicked out on the street and given arbitrary time limits. So when we're working on our contracts with these partners, we really need to start going in there and making sure that we're building out these spaces to be equitable and for all folks. And then also, too, often these issues are small. Often, these folks just need to reorder an ID so they can get a job or they can get housing or they can apply for that housing. Or they need an ID so they can get their antipsychotics so they can be stable enough to stay in their jobs. So I would like to see whether that's the community first responder team, you know, some sort of strike team or social worker to go out, make contact with every single one of our neighbors that are on the streets and ask them, what do you need right now? And let's start working for them.
Honestly, it's almost as if you all have read the draft strategic plan for the Continuum of Care. Because that, some of those things, emergency shelter is an anchor objective in the strategic plan. And it includes the, so I think absolutely to everything you said. And, you know, the part of the function of the Continuum of Care and the necessity of the Continuum of Care is that the city, for example, has very little authority over almost everything that you just described, which is true for all parties in our community. You know, we have a bunch of disparate stakeholders who need to opt in to collaboration and a common approach and a common strategy. And the COC creates the framework for that. So I think it is an exciting time for us to be having these kinds of common conversations about what's most important and figuring out how stakeholders can participate in that together.
We have our COC meeting today at four o'clock. And Emily, it's virtual. I think anyone can watch it to talk. And Emily, it's virtual, I think anyone can watch it to talk through the strategic plan. And, and as Sage said, Emily's been an amazing steward of this work and really helping the COC understand how it will operate and should operate to bring all the community partners together to work on this and not just be, you know, the city of Asheville's problem, quote unquote, or, or whoever, but to really bring everyone to the table and get alignment around how these issues will be addressed over time. So, and anyone can be a member of the COC, and there are many, many members, and there are regular meetings for members to attend. And I think, Beau, there are some good folks there that are representing the mental health community, but the feedback you provide, that sounds really important for the group to hear. So anyone, again, anyone can attend and give feedback, but the, and Emily, maybe after tonight, we can send a copy of the draft strategic plan to council. So it is available online, I think, to look at, but.
Yes, it's in the COC board meeting material, so I can share that to go in your follow-up information after this meeting.
Just to see some of this. But, you know, I think two, one of the walls that I feel like we hit as a group and as a community is sort of the lack of our deep bench to do all these things. So we're, so with Emily's guidance, really working to fill out all the missing parts, you know, things like a strong diversion program and, and other things like that, so.
That's great. Emily, thank you, as usual, doing an exceptional job with this issue and supporting the COC. In the interest of time, though, we've got two more agenda items. And I think the next one is an update on the debris removal efforts. And Jess, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here today to give you an update on debris removal. So you can go to the next slide, Talia. So we've made significant progress in our debris removal effort, so just want to take a minute and acknowledge where, how far we've come since day one. And that's largely due to our access to direct federal assistance. Our right-of-way operations are wrapping up. Waterway and private property debris removal, which I'm going to refer to as PPDR from here on out, those are still ongoing. We've got PPDR demolition and titled property removal being activated this month. Titled property, meaning towing of vehicles and campers and things like that. And we do have some additional debris removal work for more complex city properties that are unlikely to be approved for direct federal assistance, so additional contract work may be required for those projects. Okay, next slide. Okay, so just want to give some quick background on storm debris operations. Debris removal began in October with contractors that we procured through state contracts. And then our debris removal operations were realigned under FEMA management and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in early November, when the direct federal assistance mission became available, which meant that the federal government assumed 100% of the cost-share responsibility. Debris removal work that's been included in that mission includes our rights of ways, our parks and public facilities, waterways, titled property, PPDR, which includes CPDR, commercial properties, and demolition. Okay. So just want to give a quick timeline. So in February, I'll just say, initially, we had estimates that debris removal was going to take a year and a half to two years. Those were the initial thoughts. In February, the state issued a timeline to kind of ramp up that debris removal process. And so that's what some of these deadlines reflect. So we'll just say, right-of-way, our first pass, which meant kind of removing debris from critical access areas, was completed in March, March 1. April 1, they completed their final pass, and they are currently in the process of wrapping up our final punch list. Just want to note that in March, at the end of March, there, the 100% cost share of direct federal assistance, where federal 90%, state, it was federal 100%, it shifted to federal 90%, state 10%. And that just means now that there's a bit more state involvement because they do have to evaluate those costs since they bear the burden of that additional 10%. And mid-April, residents, residents were able to apply for PPDR removal from their properties. The deadline for those applications was April 15. And we're expecting that work to wrap up June 30. And waterways, early May, most of the visible waterway debris should have been removed, and we're still looking at a June 1 completion date for waterway debris removal. Now, those deadlines are always subject to change, but those are the target deadlines that were established initially. Okay. Next slide. Just last month, the city launched its public storm debris dashboard, and you can just kind of see here what the estimates are, or not the estimates, the tallies of some of the debris that we've done. And I just want to note that, I think we all heard in the beginning, there was an estimated 3 million cubic yards of debris that needed to be removed from the city. The debris removal that has actually happened under these contracts is a bit less, but just want to note that, you know, some, some was done by private contractors, some of it is, is being recorded as tonnages and not cubic yards. So there's still more debris than maybe is totally reflected by these numbers. But at this point, we've, we've done really over 700,000 cubic yards of construction and demolition debris and vegetation. Just want to note, over 120,000 tons of mud and soil, which was something that I think a lot of the FEMA and Army Corps folks had not seen necessarily, the extent of something like that in a disaster before. We've got over 680 PPDR applications from residents looking for assistance on their properties. And this storm debris dashboard is updated Mondays. Okay, next. Okay, so I'm just going to give a quick update on each of the debris streams. I'll start with right-of-way. Like I said, the, the multiple passes were completed. The city sanitation staff have been out in the field documenting where storm debris remains in the right-of-way, and we provided punch lists to Army Corps. We did request an extension until May 16 in order to get that finished. I think that extension was declined with the caveat that they will finish up our punch list, right? So it's not an official extension, but they're going to finish up our punch list. And we are providing them a final, final punch list of debris items at the end of today. For PPDR, we chose to enter into an interlocal agreement with the county. And the county is using a consultant Tetra Tech to do that sort of heavy administrative intake process that goes along with that. And they are on track to complete PPDR and CPDR by June 30. Okay, next slide. As part of that PPDR intake process, self-requested demolition was an option on the application. So residents were able to say, yes, please come demolish the structure on my property. So we're working with the county and Tetra Tech on that, but the city still has to do our own sort of permitting and bedding process. We have to go out and post properties as unsafe and are working with Asheville-Bunkham Air Quality to issue those permits. We're expecting demolition to begin mid to late May, and we're estimating around 30 structures will be removed under this demolition program. And you can see there the numbers of applicants that we've had and that are still under review, and hoping still to get all of that done by June 30 deadline.
Including the removal?
Including the removal. That is the target. And, um, yep, that is the target, yes. Okay, next slide. Okay, waterway debris removal, as you've seen, is ongoing along Swananoa and French Broad Rivers, as well as our associated tributaries. When this presentation was put together, we were still waiting on eligibility of some waterway debris from FEMA that we had submitted in February. We did get word this morning, we got, we got a report back on eligibility. I do believe that the points we submitted are eligible for removal, but we'll be reviewing that today. So just like, so, you know, as part of that process, city staff, Army Corps, FEMA, we've all been in the field, and we have to submit like actual points of waterway debris for it to be removed and go through the process of eligibility consideration, EHP review, which is environmental and historic preservation, I believe. So it just goes through a whole process before it's approved for removal. So as you see, we've removed over 260,000 cubic yards of debris from the waterways. We have a few sections complete on the French Broad River and Swananoa River. And debris removal in our tributaries has begun in Sweeten Creek, Grassy Branch, and Hominy Creek. Okay, next slide. So, you know, this debris removal process is to remove sort of like the larger hazardous debris that is a threat to public safety. It's not to remove like small bits of plastic and things like that. So any smaller debris that remains in the waterways after our debris operations, that will be addressed through our external partnerships and different volunteer initiatives. We've already got a number of nonprofit groups that are mobilized, ready to collect trash throughout the city and the county, so we're very grateful for their support. And there's also the Emergency Watershed Program, EWP, that is provided through NRCS and the USDA. The EWP process has sort of two components. They can do some debris removal if, if they find it to be eligible, and it was not eligible through FEMA. And they also do bank stabilization. I'll just note that bank stabilization, that's where my debris operations end, and that gets passed on to a different group managing that. But there is some debris that could happen, debris removal that could happen under EWP. So we did submit a letter to NRCS requesting sponsorship of that program. If that is a route we want to take, we can also just partner through the county and submit our points to them as they're already an EWP sponsor. Okay, next slide. Titled property, which like I said, includes like cars, campers, things like that. The debris mission does allow them to pull that out of waterways, or if a vehicle, somebody else's vehicle was washed up onto your property, they can remove that as part of the debris removal program. We did contract with some towing vendors recently, and they actually started work this week, and hoping that that work will not take very long to wrap up. So the, let me just say this about the towing real quick. So they'll tow, they'll tow the vehicles to a storage lot for temporary, sort of temporary storage. They'll go through a process of notification, trying to reach out to the owner, the insurance companies, and if, like, they don't, and then they'll submit it to the state for a notification process. Anyway, there's a great deal of time that the owners have to claim their vehicles, and then if it, if it doesn't happen after, you know, almost 100 days, then they can scrap the vehicle. And I just want to note in this, in our contracts, we made it clear that if, if you're an owner of a vehicle and you need to go get your vehicle from the towing lot, you'll be asked about your insurance. Insurance will generally cover towing, storage, and towing fees. But if you don't have insurance, residents will not be charged for that tow. The city will be paying for that through our contract. Kim?
You mentioned cars and RVs. One of the things that I've seen and I'm hearing about is boats. Does that also include some sort of?
Sorry. Yes, vehicles and vessels. So yeah, there are a few vessels that we've seen out there, so it would include that. Thank you. Okay, next slide. Okay, so as I said, I think that there will be, there are going to be some projects that we will not be able to complete through direct federal assistance, so we'll use public assistance for that, which will still be a cost share with federal and state governments. Debris removal projects that we're sort of expecting to be PA projects that we have that will be done with different contractors include the Riverside Cemetery root ball removal. Most of the debris has been removed from the cemetery. I believe it's been announced that there will be an opening of the cemetery soon, but there are still up to, I think, 34 root balls that need to be removed, and almost half of those need archaeological monitoring before they can be removed because just need to preserve any potential remains or artifacts that may be present in the root balls. So we expect that to be done through a different contract. We also have Reed Creek Greenway, Richmond Hill Park, some box culverts, a few punch list items still left in our parks just to get them completely cleaned up. Our towing is a PA project, and then we also have, for future consideration, the water supply system debris removal process for North Fork and Bee Tree. Okay, next slide. Okay, and so again, just to sum up, we've made a lot of progress through direct federal assistance. We've got some operations wrapping up, some ongoing, some to be activated in the future, demolition and towing starting this month. And we have a number of PA projects that will be not supported through direct federal assistance. So the city will be managing contracts for those. And that was what we have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jess. I know there probably are going to be some questions, but Jade, if you could also chime in on some concerns that have been expressed about Hominy Creek.
Yeah, thank you, Deborah. So we did, there was some specific questions and concerns around the cleanup of a section of Hominy Creek. I recognize all of the, all of the work the staff's done in the continuous effort to get through, through us to this point, definitely with an end in sight. But part of that work has been meeting onsite in various locations and discussing the removal operations with representatives from the community. Staff did meet with members of the Friends of Hominy Creek last week and discussed their concerns, developed some ideas on how to be sensitive and address the issue, address the cleanup in a certain section of the Hominy Creek. Came to an agreement, and we are going to send a letter. We, we kind of responded to this earlier this week in a, in a council update, so you're aware of this generally. Some of the additional information is that there were specific items that were identified that helped to, that were agreed upon onsite to facilitate the cleanup in the least disruptive way. And so that's what staff is going to engage the Ashbrit to start work again tomorrow, and, and based on the conversations that they had with the individuals from representing the Friends of Hominy Creek onsite last week. You'll receive a copy of that letter as well, yes?
Thanks so much. I know that staff has really kicked into gear to address this conversation. As, as I've mentioned, you know, there's so many riverways that need to be cleaned up and to become more safe, and so many of them don't have stewards like this waterway does. We have such a strong partnership with this group, and so really understanding their concerns. They know this river way better than anyone else. So thanks for all the phone calls and messages. I know that I've talked with many people this week on staff. And Ashbrit is onsite now. So I got a text at 9:04 this morning, the Ashbrit was there, and the neighbors, so I look forward to that letter getting to them. I've said, look, we're going to have information on what kind of the compromise is, but they're feeling a little anxious and in the dark, so thanks for prioritizing getting back to them.
Understood. We wanted to convey this information to council, the idea we're going to send the letter immediately. So that's, Mayor?
Thanks. So yesterday, on the Chamber of Commerce's sort of tour of the recovery of Asheville, when you're driving down River Road, when you're driving down River Road, which we did in the bus, you can still see a lot of properties where there's obviously a dilapidated building and debris and it's private, it's onsite, private property. Some have been immaculately cleaned up and are, you know, completely scraped bare. But there are many that are sitting there. And so how do we, you know, how do Jess, how do we know? Is there a way to know like which properties are just waiting on the list for that onsite private debris removal, private property debris removal, which ones have applied for hazard mitigation? And maybe so they don't, they're not opting into debris removal because they're going to wait it out for hazard mitigation? Or, or none of the above? Because we get a lot of questions like you can, in Biltmore Village, you can see Mo's, right, and Osaka. And you've got these buildings that look kind of dangerous, actually. I mean, they're just sort of propped up and, you know, you don't want anyone going in there. Some of these properties are fenced off, some aren't. Anyway, I'm a little bit all over the place. But is there a way to, is there a map or lists or something where we could have a better understanding of what, what's planned for, for these sites? I know we've gotten a number of questions about the Mana Food Bank Building. And anyway, I'll leave it there.
So we do have a list of everyone who's applied for private property debris removal and for demolition. Or we can get that, you know, we can get that list. It's, it's quite extensive. But we do not have, I do not have from the debris side, the hazard mitigation properties. But it is something that we, you know, discussed, like what, you know, in a non-storm event, right, we have a property that, that is in some sort of state. We deal with it through a code enforcement process. So it's like, you know, what, how do we identify these properties that haven't applied, that aren't going for hazard mitigation? And then how do we reach out to them to get them the support that they need to make their property safe? And that is a complicated discussion, I think, for the future. But it's definitely on the horizon.
Okay, yeah. And I just want to be able to be responsive to, to the community. We've got, you know, we've got folks that are, we heard today, the Bohemian Hotel is reopening in Biltmore Village. We're here, we heard from property owners that are excited to reopen their businesses. But with some concerns around, well, but what if the neighboring property is in a, you know, it's unsightly, it's unsafe? Also, you know, with derelict properties, you end up getting some safety concerns beyond just site safety concerns. So just a lot of questions. It'd be such a helpful tool to be able to say, well, you know, this one's waiting on this. Or it sounds like we'll see a lot more happening by the end of June with the ones that at least have applied for the debris removal or demolition. But anyway, if there's a way to share that resource with council or the community or both, that would be terrific.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have like four minutes and I want to do a time check. Who has a heart stop at one?
Logically, I sort of have a stop at one because I want to eat lunch before my 2 o'clock. But anyway.
Jade, I think we can do this in 10 minutes or less. All right, Jade?
Yeah, thank you all for the extra time. I'm going to turn this quickly over to Chris Carnes. He's got several traffic engineering updates that he wants throughout to mention to you. So no further ado, Chris.
Jade, actually, I'm going to do the first part and then I'm going to hand it over to Chris.
Okay, Jessica Morris again.
So we have three things in this, in this presentation we want to give you a heads up about. And the first one is just letting you know about a bus stop that we're relocating on Tunnel Road. And then Chris is going to do the last two, which have to do with the parking and traffic flow on Cleeeman Avenue. And then lastly, we are going to be establishing some speed limits in the Burton Street neighborhood. So I'll do a little overview of this bus stop. This is something that we had been working with APD with because a safety issue has been identified. So this is on Tunnel Road at Buckstone Place. And it is in the vicinity of the Compass Point Village, Homeward Bound, Asheville Terrace Apartments. The yellow dot is where the current bus stop is located. And what we have is a lot of folks crossing Tunnel Road at a, not in a crosswalk, at a mid-block location. And there have been a lot of concerns that we've heard from the community as well as four pedestrian crashes at that location since November, including one that was very serious and disabling. That location is in the middle of a curve. There's a grade. And so the site visibility is, is not great and that is causing some issues there. So we're proposing to move the, the bus stop from where the yellow circle is to the green circle. And the reason that we feel that that is a better location is because there is a traffic signal at White Pine Drive. There are sidewalks there. And so it will be a little bit longer of a walk from, for people that perhaps were crossing mid-block from like Compass Point or Homeward Bound. But if they are walking down to White Pine, they can cross with a signal in a crosswalk and then they'll just have to go to that green circle. So we feel that this is a much safer location. And we wanted to give you guys just some, some heads up on that in case you hear from any of your constituents. And I am going to hand it over to Chris.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Carnes, the city traffic engineer. And I just want to give you a quick briefing on a couple of items that have just come up lately. Cleeeman Avenue extension, there's been some changes very recently that have been ongoing for years. But there've been problems throughout the years too, operationally on the street. And when the new development came in, the apartments, the wire apartments, that provide an opportunity to clean things up a little bit, make things more uniform. And more importantly, to provide emergency access. Some of the challenges here are showing the picture. People would park both sides, but one of those is on the broken up sidewalk on the west side, which is now the apartment side. And what would happen is there'd be so much flow, it would get blocked up and fire trucks couldn't get through. And there'd also be a lot of aggressive driving. So to help address all of that, the, the street would stay the same. There's new sidewalk up next to the apartments. But there was just a designated amount of parking now. There are board loading zones, less informal parking, and now all the entire side where the galleries are and the coffee shop, everything on the commercial side, that no longer allows parking. So it does remain clear, we've received a lot of concerns about what that means for the people that are using these buildings. So we will continue to work with, with folks. Adjustments can be made. But what I've encouraged folks, when I've spoken to them, is that let's let things settle down, see how, when the apartments come in, what happens and what, what changes make sense at that point. But we will continue to do that. One of the things I want to mention, there is additional parking available that will be available in the garage in the apartments. I think it's 61 spaces. And there are more spaces now available on Robert Street, about 20-ish. And moving forward, one of the things somebody brought up is can we get speed limit signs? And yes is the answer to that. However, there is no speed limit in code. So I'm working on that to get that presented to city council for a recommendation to make a speed limit that's not the statutory 35. Let me move on to Burton Street. We've been working with Burton Street now as a city for quite a while, stemming from the I-26 outreach and the, something that came up with, or has been part of the neighborhood plan that city council approved in 2018 is to have more consistent speed limits. And when I looked at this closely, I found out that over half the streets do not have speed limits in code. So just looking at what makes sense for the community, the residential nature of it and kind of having two roads on the outside that carry more traffic. I want to assign speed limits to all of the streets. So that is a recommendation I plan to bring to council this summer. And I did present this and discuss it with the community association in April. And there was a lot of positive feedback, partly because I know they want to, in the future, request more traffic calming. And this does open the door for that. So this is just a map showing all the streets that have speed limits. There's 25s, there's 20s. And then there's all the white streets. There are no speed limits assigned. So the idea is to have the interior ones all lower speed because there's no sidewalks for short streets, narrow streets. People should not be going fast. And then like the 25 on Burton and Florida unchanged. And back to the key takeaways, it was about the bus relocation, the safety concerns. And then the parking and traffic claim and extension, I will continue to work with folks. And we will be evaluating things as the apartments get occupied. And Burton Street, we will continue to work with the neighborhood. This is something that we're actively working on. This and some other operational safety concerns. We've worked with the community association directly. That's it.
Great job, team. Bo?
Thank you, Jade. Regarding the Cleeeman Avenue extension and the parking, I am hearing a lot from business owners down in that area that they're concerned about the lack of available parking spaces. So I'm wondering if there might be a way, as we kind of move forward, maybe designate some of those spots there for those small businesses? And then another concern was a lot of those people are there all day. And it's only two-hour parking, I believe. And if there's a way to maybe have a special permitting for the folks that work along there and the small businesses so that they can park there all day?
As a business worker, I would say that could be very damaging to a business to let the staff work and park in the spaces all day that need to be there for the customers. I know parking is an enormous issue for workers and, and customers, visitors, locals, everybody. I hear it in downtown a lot and I have for decades. But it's interesting to me that this project went through like 10 years ago. So I'm guessing that the people that are there now had no idea that it was approved and when and why and so on. But I don't know. I think we have a standard like on-street metering policy. I don't, to change them to like a yellow meter space or something is something totally different. I don't know that we'd want it down there. But I echo the sentiments that some kind of deal for parking and workforce is generally needed everywhere. I know the county's deck never quite filled up, but that's locational. So I kind of want to, I don't want us to disrupt the River Arts District in that way. But I do want us to have bigger conversations about workforce parking in our community to get like all around.
And I appreciate all this feedback. It really is a balance of needs. Something that I've heard consistently in the four years I've been here is that we need more loading zones. I also hear other things about accessible parking and things like that. So I've also had mixed feelings. My employees can park near the wedge or something. I just, it does come from all different, everybody has a different need, opinion. So it's a tough balance. And that's why I think it's important for things to settle down once the apartments start getting occupied this summer.
You know, be curious to know or get an update in the future on what we are doing with the things we originated during COVID, which were like 10-minute pickup spots and stuff. You know, maybe there is some room in our inventory of parking spaces to give some back to either, you know, revenue streams, workforce, et cetera. But I see a lot of those around. I don't know what the situation is in the River Arts District, but in general, an update about those would be good.
Those, there are some. There are less than there were four years ago. That is something that has come up, supposed to ask, can we do time of day for these loading zones? Because there are four, three large loading zones and then one just regular size. And we will look at the option of doing a time-based where after a certain hour on certain days or something that then it's open to the public.
You know, also the wire made like 400, they built 400 parking spaces. I know some amount are open to the public, but maybe we could help liaise a relationship where they do some workforce spacing monthly or something, you know? I don't know if they could just, we could help them get in the same room, but it's an idea.
And just personally.
Very enthusiastic about all of these suggestions. I was wondering the same thing, Sage, because that, when, when Chris talked about how many, as I remember, they were trying to make sure there was available spaces at the wire for their own. I think they have seven commercial spaces in their building. So I'm sure they got to kind of figure that out, though.
There's, there's, they're required to provide 61 public parking spaces in the garage. And then they, they built a small park, surface parking lot on Robert Street that I believe has 18 spaces or so. And those are also public. They're not free. They're not managed by the city. I think they have a private parking management company managing those. But, and I don't know if they're open yet, but those are going to be publicly available.
And I think the message here is this is a work in progress and we appreciate the feedback. And we'll continue to work with those business owners and developers as we, as we move forward and try to come up with the best solution we can. Bo, I think you had your hand, Bo had his hand raised and I don't know if he was.
Oh, no. Jade talked about it. It was the loading zone and making those maybe certain times and parking other times. So it got handled.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to express one last thing about the Tunnel Road moving of the bus stop. I'm still worried that people will still walk across the street there. And I don't know what it takes. I think, I feel like it takes years to get NCDOT to put a crosswalk somewhere else. But I think we're still going to see people walking across the street. So if there's some kind of reconnaissance we need to start doing to try and get a crosswalk there one day, we might want to start. So we have it in 10 years.
We, we were kind of talking about something similar with the Haywood Road repaving. Is that people are going to move where they feel safe, not necessarily where it is safe. And so when I was reviewing this, one of the things that's coming up is the Asheville Terrace Apartments. The, we may have folks, and Homeward Bound, Compass Point Village, we may have folks that are disabled trying to access the space. So just making sure that the light where the crosswalk is, is stopped long enough that people can safely cross because there's more traffic there. That will help. People will feel safer if the light's long enough. Right now, folks may feel safer crossing where they did before because sometimes you can see better. When folks are coming out of White Pine Drive, turning right, for example, they may not be looking for people. They may be looking to the left for the car that's coming and not for the people in the crosswalk. So there's still safety concerns and the timing of light will be important.
And I think it's going to be vitally important that we have, you know, education, community outreach, just making sure that people know that this is different. And because we have some good partners at Compass Point and Asheville Terrace, we have that opportunity to, to educate and inform and encourage that the behavior change sooner than later.
Remind me where the outbound stop is on Tunnel Road for this block? Do we know?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head.
There's multiple on this stretch because I, I've used it recently. I just can't remember. But it would be important to see if, if it's not just one-way, but if it's two-way traffic on that.
I don't, I don't believe it is. Yeah, we looked at that, but I can't recall exactly where that, where that is. Oh, it's at White Pine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's at White Pine. So that's another, I guess, positive that hopefully, hopefully that'll help because they'll both be right there.
Thank you.
Okay, so the mayor can get her lunch and the rest of us as well. I greatly appreciate you all's, y'all's time. I know this was a dense agenda. But have a great rest of the week.
Also, there's a new pub. We all, we all got to go see the new pub.
Mayor? Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I get you and Vice Mayor on for maybe five minutes after this right now? Hi, y'all.
All righty.
Can you stay on for just a minute longer? Sorry.